A call to order, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Switche?
Here.
Mr. McIrvin?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Say here. Say here.
Here!
And Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Great, thank you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America, is a career and technical student organization for high school and post-secondary students who plan to pursue a health career, whereas HOSA serves as a pipeline of future health professionals, and whereas HOSA provides a strong foundation for preparing tomorrow's healthcare professionals through skill development, leadership opportunities, and community service, and whereas HOSA provides a strong foundation for preparing tomorrow's healthcare professionals through skill development, leadership opportunities, and community service, and whereas HOSA promotes the development of responsible citizenship, personal integrity, and compassion for humanity. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the week of December 5th to 9th to be Limburg HOSA Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the special observance and witness whereof. I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 5th day of December 2016, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I believe we have a couple of students from Limburg here to receive the proclamation, and you're welcome to say a couple of comments if you would like.
We don't have a speech prepared, but we just want to say thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, counsel, a couple of things. First, a number of you braved the elements and attended our Clam Lights inaugural lighting last Friday night. I wanted to just remind the public that the lights will be on from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. every night through January 1st, so you're welcome to go out and enjoy that activity and enjoy cool on this time of year. Second is with the inclement weather that we're anticipating this week, I want to just remind people of a couple of things. First, we will, we're partnering with the Renton Ecumenical Association of Churches to open the cold weather shelter at the old Chamber Building, which is located at 300 Rainier Avenue North, just overlooks the airport, due to these below-freezing temperatures. That shelter will operate tomorrow night and Wednesday night, and check-in and registration are at 8:00 p.m., checkout is about 7:00 a.m., and that's when the shelter will close, and people will be able to vacate then. All are welcome. The cold weather shelter is available for single women and men, couples and homeless families, and children who are living on the streets or in vehicles. Separate sleeping spaces have been prepared for men, women, and for families with children. It's, again, operated by the Ecumenical Association of Churches from the Greater Renton Community. We appreciate that partnership. People can get ahold of and get more information by contacting the Crisis Clinic, that's, you dial 211 for that, or you can call here at City Hall, 425-430-6600, and, or get on our website at rentonw.gov and you can get information. And clearly, those people that you may see out in the community that you think might need a shelter, please, please let them know about this so they can go somewhere and be dry and warmer. Also related to inclement weather, we want to just remind folks that street flooding can be prevented a lot, in large part by folks just monitoring their catch basins near their home to keep them free of leaves and other debris. In snow and ice events, we'll have our street sanders and snowplows out. They're dispatched to handle arterial streets first and to keep them as open as possible. Want to remind folks that, in the case of inclement weather, don't park your or abandon your vehicle within any portion of traffic lanes. Get them off to the side so that those snowplows can, can do their job. That, I think, is all.
Mr. Mayor? Okay, thanks, Mr. Covington. And I want to thank our community services staff that has been scrambling to make sure we have a shelter for people that are homeless during this cold weather, so, and also appreciate the efforts of the airport staff that have been helping with that. Moving on to audience comments, we have several people that have signed up to address the council. When I call your name, would you please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record? And you have five minutes. We have a light and a timer next to the city clerk. First is Eddie Rye Jr.
My first time as a Renton resident coming to one of the Renton City Councils, is this a proper procedure?
Stand up there, Mr. Rye.
Thanks, a little different Seattle, okay. Thank you very much. My name is Eddie Rye. I am with the Washington State Civil Rights, Washington State Civil Rights Coalition, representing 30 community organizations throughout Martin Luther King Jr. County. And it was brought to our attention that Renton was really lackluster when it came down to inclusion and diversity, and I'm referring specifically to descendants of United States slaves. I'm, I'm not opposed to money for immigrants, refugees, women, and minorities, but we have a 425-year history in this country. And when I look at your numbers, we are not included. It's my understanding you have one black firefighter out of 150. And we had requested some information through the Freedom of Information Act. We got the information back on the contractors, the people you were doing business with, but it did not disaggregate the data to let us know where we were included. So I'm very concerned because I travel the city frequently. I've never seen a black person driving a Renton City vehicle. I've never seen a black on a Renton work crew. I've never seen a black working on any of the private contractors that you engage. So we're here today as home of the Seahawks, and we certainly hope that some of your contractors and employees look like some of the Seahawk players. I see you trotting them out all the time, but they will find out that the people that look like them, that live in this city, that do business in this county, are not included in the opportunities provided by the City of Renton. I'm very dissatisfied with that. It's really unfortunate because people are really being misled when they see you with the Seahawks, the home of the Seahawks, but yet when people that look like the Seahawks can't get any business or any jobs here. 500 people that I see as employees, and I see 12 African-Americans. Unacceptable. About 36 people of color working for the City of Renton. It's unacceptable in 2016, and I certainly hope that you take this to heart and do something about it. Because we're going to make an issue, I talked to Mike Flood, the PR guy with the Seahawks already, told him we're very concerned, and we don't want those guys kneeling for the National Anthem. We want them standing up for justice for black folks in this city and this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Charlie James.
Appreciate the opportunity. I am the co-chair of the African-American Political Action Committee, as well as a member of the Coalition. My concern is, is the same as Eddie, it's a little bit different. One of the things that I've been trying to push real hard, I'm also the founder of Martin Luther King Memorial Park, is that we live in a county called Martin Luther King County, the only county in the nation named after an African-American or for Martin Luther King. And in light of where we are politically in this nation right now, Martin Luther King County could very well be the shining light for the rest of the nation on racial and social justice. We could very well end up in that position. And we're hoping, and it's one of the reasons that I sent the information to the City of Renton to re, to request information, we'll be, we'll be sending the same information to the City of Federal Way, to the City of Kemp, so we're not just picking on you guys. We're sending it to every city and municipality in Martin Luther King County, and we're asking them all to step up to say, "We are willing to do some things in Martin Luther King County that other people in the rest of the country have not seen or have not done." I think we're capable of doing that, and I think America really needs a place like Martin Luther King County to step up to the plate and do those type of things at this time in our history. And I hope, I hope that the City of Renton recognizes that and other municipalities recognize the importance of that, and we make Martin Luther King County a very special place in this country. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Uh, next is Fred Anderson.
Good evening. I'm here as a former player that played in the NFL, played with the Seahawks, played with the Steelers, played in the USFL. I've seen a lot of cities around the country, okay? From Birmingham to Pittsburgh to Tampa, different places, Houston. And I'm here to say that I'm supporting what Mr. Rye and what Mr. Charlie James just said. And I was also a former contractor for 20-some years. And I bid a lot of projects around the state, throughout the state, the city of Seattle, Sea-Tac, Federal Way, Tacoma, and I've never seen any opportunities come down the pipeline from the City of Renton. And the City of Renton needs to be, like, transparent. I mean, reflect your community. Hire people from, that look like your community. And one, two firefighters, one firefighter African-American out of 150, that doesn't represent the City of Renton, does it? I don't think it does. And so I'd like to see you all step up and do what's right by the people. Okay? All righty.
Thank you. Next is Diane Dobson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I come to you tonight on behalf of the North Renton Neighborhood Association, living in North Renton myself. There are a few efforts underway driven by the Renton Police Department that I'm here to express neighborhood support for. One is the No Buy From List, which neighbors polled thus far showing 100% support for. I know you've had some, some pushback by the, the pawn associations and pawn shops, and I wanted to express to you our neighborhood's full support of that endeavor. One neighbor in an effort to see things from a pawn shop perspective, recognized that there might be a fear of having to interact negatively with someone in the shop or store, recognizing being the first one to have to tell a customer you can't buy from them might be an experience that might not go over too well. That neighbor made the same suggestion of putting a sign outside the store that says, "We won't buy from the No Buy From List," alerting potential sellers of the same before a face-to-face ever happens. So neighbors are trying to be open-minded to the parties involved and, and see things from the other side as well, and offering suggested solutions to potential challenges and pushback, while still showing their support to the city and the Renton Police Department during, towards this effort and endeavor. Another area we're seeing neighborhood support for that I convey to you is the alcohol impact area. While we don't seem to have any personal experience stated within the neighborhood for the same, neighbors are eager to see the results of the voluntary compliance, including which stores are or are not supportive with that ver, that effort. And the neighborhood thanks the City of Renton and the Renton Police Department for even entertaining the idea, as it would show that you are hearing the concerns of the community and citizens and are exploring different avenues and thinking outside the box with efforts toward solutions. Recently, our North Renton Neighborhood had a meeting, and various representatives of the city were kind enough to come to the meeting and explain various aspects of the city-centered community plan to our neighbors. One component that we spent quite a lot of focus on was the proposal of the Green Belt Promenade on the north side of the Cedar, between North First Street and Riverside. While I'm sure you all have heard my own personal opinion on that part of the plan, I'm here to relay to the council the overall sentiment of the neighbors in attendance was not in favor of the concept as proposed. As a neighborhood, we are encouraged at that meeting to drive this part of the plan forward, but respectfully, neighbors need reassurances. We've heard too many different stories from "it will never happen," "you don't need to disclose," "you do need to disclose." This is all conceptual, to an email that we received, and I, and I read to you the, the email, which came right from your Economic Development Planning Committee. It says, "I understand that you and your neighbors are concerned about the strategy that is in the city-centered community plan to naturalize the Cedar River. You've stated a concern that the city would use eminent domain in order to accomplish such naturalization of the river. The adopted city-centered community plan includes the following language regarding implementing the Cedar River Greenway Promenade. Strategies such as transfer of development rights, zoning changes, or purchases of property would be considered and evaluated to determine the best approach. I want to be clear that the city considers the use of eminent domain as a last resort and would only utilize it to further public need, safety, and/or health, or only when there are no other options available." That email in itself is, is disconcerting and, and somewhat contradictory to the "hey, rest easy, it will never happen" sentiments that we're, we're verbally receiving. So as we, as a neighborhood, work to support the city in your various endeavors and challenges, and we're invigorating the Neighborhood Association to help do our part to make Renton a better place, we ask you for your support with this challenge and concern that we are facing, and that is the potential for the loss of home and property for 27 parcels of property. We met with Mr. Vincent Covington on multiple matters on Friday, and the subject matter came up. It was discussed alternate proposals, including the restoration of the walkway to the Upper Bank as it was back in the 70s and 80s before the city removed the same. The existence of this upper walkway as it existed, with the same houses in place and the river naturalized, came as a surprise to city representatives. So I brought with me tonight, and I know there's something about presentation of photos as evidence, but I brought with me tonight photos from the 70s that show the, the river in its natural state without a sidewalk, and I, on the sidewalk on North Riverside Drive, and then the North Riverside Drive with the sidewalk in place. And so I think it's important for city officials and representatives to see that not only are there other solutions possible, but there was already a solution in place that, that would save these houses and, and homes. We, respectfully, we, we understand the necessity for growth and responsible growth, and we're, we're in full support of the same, and, and we hope that the council supports our process and the challenges that we're facing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, I, we've heard about this concern before, and I guess I'd just like to say that my, my understanding when we were working on different community plans for different neighborhoods is, is that they would be living documents that, I mean, I, I would like for the neighborhood to be energized and enthusiastic about the city-centered community plan, and if there's an element that's got them concerned, and, and so they're not embracing it, I, I, my view would be, we should just get in and edit it and, and correct it to the way they'd like it to read. And, and I mean, for, for our part, I think on council, when we approved this, we, we, we just wanted the, the, the community, the neighbors to, to be happy with it, and if there's a piece that's getting misinterpreted, or the, or the meaning's not clear, I, I just think we should fix it, you know, and I, I guess I want to say I support the neighborhood and their desire to get that straightened out.
Mr. President, do I hear, is this required an amendment of the city plan, or just that we just, I don't know, I'm, I'm asking.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll have Chip Vincent come up and explain what we could do. Diane, was that the, did that complete your comments?
It does. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corman.
Thank you, Mayor Law, council members, Chip Vincent from Community and Economic Development. And just, first off, I just wanted to thank Diane and the other leadership team from the North Renton Neighborhood Association, Kathleen and Neil, who are the other officers in the North Renton Neighborhood. As Ms. Dobson indicated, we had a really robust conversation at the North Renton Neighborhood in meeting, and I can say this because I felt like I was the centerpiece of the meeting. And it was really, it was a really frank, candid, open, very collegial conversation we had about the city-centered plan, and specifically about the policy that Ms. Dobson references. At the end of the day, the, really, the issue from my point of view is the fact that the policy really lacks definition. It's, it's an overarching, very high conceptual plan, and it lacks definition. And what I did, recommended that evening at the end of the meeting, that I share with you, is we had three members of the city-centered planning board there. Ms. Dobson, we had Mike O'Donnan, and we had George Daniels there, all members from the North Renton who all sit on the city-centered planning board. And I said, "If this is an issue for the communities, since we haven't done parties, let's take it on." And I encouraged the neighborhood group to recommend to their, their appointees on the city-centered planning board, "Let's get on with this one. Let's recommend it, then we can bring it to the mayor and the council as a priority, and let's just deal with it." Because I can understand, I'm very sensitive to the fact that there's a fear of the unknown, and the plan is a policy by nature, it lacks definition, so if there's this level of angst, let's simply, you know, recognize that and move on from the process. As the author of the email, and I appreciate that she didn't mention my name, but it was me. As, I will say, as the author of that email, it's really, while we have a policy there, as I told Ms. Dobson and members of the North Renton Neighborhood Association, what I can tell you is I know how this council and this mayor will deal with issues of policy as it affects private property rights and their choices.
Yeah.
But I can't speak for future councils. This is a 20-year plan, so that's my recommendation for why I say, "Let's deal with this issue now with this mayor and this council," because I know which way we're going to fall. It's really hard, though, to speak for future legislative bodies, because I just don't know, and I hate to say something that frankly I don't have control of in terms of what the choices are.
Okay, Chip, so to cut to the chase. Is it safe to say that we can wordsmith this and do the editing necessary so that it, that the, the neighborhood feels comfortable with the verbiage and, and that we meet the intent so that we don't have this problem?
We, we could do that, or we could just initiate this and deal with it. I mean, put, put definition to the verbiage.
If, if, we could do both. I mean, we want to engage the neighborhood to participate in what other things may look like in the future, but let's, if, if in fact we can get in and edit the plan so that it isn't at all threatening in nature, why don't we at least get that step out of the way if we could? Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, we, we're getting a lot of energy down there, we're obviously on the verge of seeing a lot of investment. The thing we want most of all is for the community, city center to just be really active and, and their assistance and support, and, and so I, I think in, to the extent that we can just, just clear up, you know, and today it's this issue, but maybe there'll be other wording changes that, that have people concerned in the future, and I just, I just want to see us have a way to get that straightened out so that we keep people enthusiastic.
Absolutely doable.
Okay, thank you very much, Chip, appreciate it.
Thank you. Good.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, we have 11 items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove items 6I and, no, 6, 6J from the consent agenda for separate consideration.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move approval of the consent agenda as published minus items I and J.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Pavoni, the council concur with the consent agenda, minus items I and J. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Perez?
Yes, thank you. Because of timing concerns, the Transportation Committee received a briefing on both issues in committee tonight. Therefore, I move that both I and J be approved as consent concord. And if you want more details about that, the first one has to do with, which is the I, has to do with how, how do you call this? Let me see. Transportation System Division recommends approval of the contract with Mac Leod Record P O L C in the amount of 198 to the trails and bicycle master plan, and the bicycle tolls, that the plan that was approved in, in 2009, it's time for, for, for this plan to include other projects, including, for example, the East Side Rail, and, and another trails on the Sooks Creek area and all of that, that they are not included, of course. We know these documents are, are living, living documents, so that's the first one. And J, this is a, a big one, which is, the Transportation System Division recommends approval of Geo Work Order with SAVI contracts. Basically, this is installation of side ramps at Northwest Fourth Street and Taylor Avenue Northwest, and we really want these to pass tonight because this person had waited 11 years for happening, so we think it's time for us to just move forward.
All right, I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Mr. Corman, items I and J be, council concur on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Perez. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll just point out, we took care of my item for the committee, the whole, under item G of the consent agenda, so I have no further unfinished business.
Okay. Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, three reports.
Okay, Finance Committee, committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on December 5th, 2016, claims vouchers 351982 through 351986, 351989 through 352004, 352031 through 352370, 35234 through 352391, 352399 through 352417, 352419 through 352420, 352655 through 352662, 352431 through 352654, 5157 through 5160, 5169 through 5179, 5189 through 5196, 0312016, 102716, 103116, 111016, 111516, 111716, and two wire transfers and three payroll runs with benefit withholding payments totaling $12,571,073.42, and payroll vouchers including 1,209 direct deposits and 602 payroll vouchers totaling $3,499,903.86, signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor, that's a hard one to follow. But just, I like to pick out one or two things every week, but we, in this voucher run, is a two-month payment to the SCOR jail, our regional jails facility, for $783,939.80. It's just to show what it costs to run a city. With that, I can tell you, no, I won't talk about the other one, I move approval of the claims and payroll vouchers.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni, the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Does anybody want Jason to run through the voucher numbers again? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Next is the authorization to purchase a Caterpillar 926 wheel loader. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor to approve the purchase of a Caterpillar 926M wheel loader from NC Machinery using the state big contract number 16904. The estimated final cost of $148,998.84 is within the budgeted amount of the Equipment Rental Fund 501 vehicle replacement and acquisition schedule approved by council as part of the 2015-2016 biennium budget, signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
We asked them for all three committee members that would like to take a drive around the parking lot with it, but they kind of just looked at us and laughed. So with that, I move we concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni, the council concur with the Finance Committee report. You're still willing to pass it even though you didn't get to drive it, huh?
Well, I'm scared they'd take the old one and run over me.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the final Finance Committee report is the 2017 Lodging Tax Fund allocations. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2017 Lodging Tax Fund allocations. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met on September 15th, 2016, to set a timeline for the application process and directing staff to hold a workshop for interested applicants on September 27th, 2016. Applications were due on October 7th, and 13 applications were received. The committee heard presentations from all applicants on October 27th, 2016. The committee heard presentations from all applicants on October 21st and met again on the same day to finalize its recommendations. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommends Renton City Council approve 2017 expenditures from the Lodging Tax Fund as follows. Renton Chamber of Commerce operation of tourism organization, $152,000. Real Renton, Renton Film Frenzy and Other Events, $15,500. Renton Chamber of Commerce and the RENCON, $15,000. Renton Chamber of Commerce Return to Renton Car Show, $5,000. City of Renton, Renton Community Marketing, $65,000. Tasveer, South Asian Film Festival, $5,000. API Chaya and Ravishing Women, Ravishing Women's Show, $5,000. Northwest Premier Junior Football and Cheer All-Star Weekend, $7,500. And finally, the City of Renton Multicultural Festival, $25,000. Total recommendation, $295,000. This signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Pavoni. The council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Witchy?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McErvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has a couple of committee reports.
Hey, Utilities Committee requests for release of utility easements from the Renton School District. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to grant a release of an existing utility easement contained and described under King County recording 2007-0416000702 and number 5852489, subject to the collection of the requisite processing fee from the Renton School District related to the Metalcrest Early Learning Center. This is signed by the chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McErvin.
Yes, we no longer have utilities running in here, so we're going to go ahead and release that easement. So with that, I'll move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McErvin, second by Ms. Perez. The council concur with Utilities Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And next is regarding a leak adjustment code update. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to modify the water billing adjustment for water leak section of the Renton Municipal Code to clarify the water adjustments will be granted for the water service line only and to include a definition of the water service line. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McErvin.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McErvin, second by Ms. Perez. The council concur with the Utilities Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to legislation. We have two ordinances this evening?
Okay, two ordinances. First is regarding the water leak amendment. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Section 8446 of Chapter 4, Water of Title 8, Health and Sanitation of the Renton Municipal Code, clarifying the city's water leak adjustment policy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McErvin.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McErvin, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, here we go. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 42110, 42115, 4340, 43100, 43110, 4430, 4440, 4460, 4470, 4480, 4490, 44110, 4630, 4660, 47150, 47200, 47220, 49150, 49200, 41160, 41190, 411120, 411160, 411190, 9102, 9111, and 9151 of Municipal Code adopting low-impact development principles and practices in compliance with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit, including adding and amending regulations in the definitions of impervious surface feasible with regard to application of the Surface Water Design Manual in Renton Municipal Code 4630, Infiltration Facility, LID Best Management Practices, Low-Impact Development, LID, Impervious Surface, Stormwater Facility, and Surface Water Design Manual, and adopting the 2016 King County Surface Water Manual with the City of Renton amendments thereto and the April 2016 King County Stormwater Pollution Prevention Manual.
Mr. Mayor, we tried to outdo the Finance Committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McErvin.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McErvin, second by Mr. Corbin, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to new business, Mr. Corbin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just like to announce a committee of the whole meeting for Monday, December 12th at 6 o'clock PM. It'll be here in council chambers. We have one item on that agenda, Republic Services Solid Waste Contract Update. And then I'll just also announce that we'll have an executive session. I'll give more details as, as we adjourn the meeting tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
And that is all. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a Plan Development Committee meeting this Thursday, December 8th at 4:00 PM in the council conference room. We have three items on the agenda. Docket Number 12, incentives for ADU briefing, and emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, December 12th, there'll be Finance Committee Chair, Finance Committee meeting at 5:00 PM in the council conference room, two topics, vouchers and emerging issues in revenue sessions and revenue streams.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Witchy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, December 12th, the Community Services Committee will be meeting in the council conference room to discuss the Housing Repair System Program Policies, and that is all.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for your daughter helping us light up Kulan Park on Saturday night. That was very nice.
Thank you for letting her do it.
Betcha. Mr. McErvin?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Perez?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, December 12th, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting in the council conference room at 4:00 PM. We have five items, the Alcohol Impact Area Ordinance, the Interlocal Agreement for the Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team, Pawn Ordinance, and Emerging Issues in Public Safety. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, I should know this, but I don't. Is the Pawn Ordinance topic, is that they do not buy?
Yes.
Discussion, okay. I just want to make clear for the public, that's what, that's what'll be discussed. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Corbin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council meeting recess into executive session for approximately 15 minutes to discuss labor negotiations with no official action to be taken, and that the council meeting be adjourned when the executive session is adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved, Mr. Corbin, seconded by six others, that we recess to executive session for 15 minutes on labor negotiations. Meeting will be adjourned after the executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.